Order if you could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone? Okay, we have no one for open forum this evening. So we will move right into the best part of tonight's meeting. We'll do the best first. Special recognition for former school committee member, Mr. Michael Dakotas. I'll kick things off very briefly. And we had hoped to do this last week, but unfortunately, Mother Nature took care of that meeting for us. So for those of you out in TV land, because I know everyone in the room is very familiar with Mike, but Mike served with us on the school committee from 2020 through 2024. He started during the COVID times when we were all meeting on camera and when we came in here wearing our masks, et cetera. If I'm not mistaken, you couldn't make the, you may have had an issue with getting sworn in because of COVID. Yep. But, you know, as dedicated as he was, he did get, he did get here and got sworn in and served his full term. Mike was dedicated and attentive and very much an active participant in our meetings, and it's all on YouTube. And I will say, Mike, that your contributions made a difference for the children of Tiverton, and I do thank you for your service. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, I want to just echo that, and I want to say that for anyone that served during those periods, that those are some very difficult decisions, there were some very difficult discussions. And I know that, you know, Michael, at least you were very cognizant of making sure that parents had a say, and you always listened very intently to what they said, and I know that that was very much appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike. We volunteered together many years ago at Picasset, so that's when I met you, and this seemed like the right next step for you, and you did great, you worked really hard, and I know you heard from me a few times, so thank you for that and thank you for your service.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Dakotas, if you have anything you'd like to say, come on up.
What have you known me that's...
No, we do have a full agenda, sir.
I have three minutes, right, if I remember correctly? Michael Dakotas, 19 Louise Drive. So thank you, this is very nice. Thank you to the administration, Ben, Peter, Sarah, anyone that's not here. I think my story does start with PTO. All-day kindergarten, that's where I met Deb first. Elaine used to come to all our events at Picasset with Sally, that's where I met you. We did big things there, that PTO was a little sleepy, and we woke it, it was a giant. And I'll never forget, certain people like Deb, even Sally, said, hey, you gotta get involved, and I did. I enjoyed my time in the school committee. Budget committee first, learned a lot about the town, and then thought it was the right next step for me to come here, have background in education, children in the school system, and it was the right time because Sally was stepping out. And I will say that when I came on, it was a different time, we were meeting via Zoom all the time. And I'll say the one thing that I probably learned the most was, is when you know somebody, but then you're on a board or a commission or something, it's different. And because we all have our own ideas, we bring something different to the table. So I think in government, different ideas and views are good, and I appreciate the people I serve with. So Deb, Diane, Elaine, and Jerry, who's not here, appreciate all the times we had. I hope we've made a difference to push this forward, especially following with Peter educationally. And I wish you all, especially Kim and Jocelyn, being new, I wish you the best going forward. I know you have a lot of tough work and decisions ahead of you, I know what it's like. But if you ever need me for anything, even if it's a shoot an idea, I'm here, so thanks.
Thank you, Mike, and just Jerry did send his regrets, he was not able to join us this meeting. He would have been here last Wednesday, but unfortunately, tonight he cannot.
He's a big shot, it's hard to get him now.
He had a big speech planned. But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. The seats are at a premium tonight, so. Well, thank you very much, and again, Mike, thank you for everything. And don't be a stranger, I expect to see you in the audience on a regular basis.
I expect to see you as our first mayor someday. That's what I'm waiting for, if I live that long.
Never say never, Mike. Never say never.
Oh, my goodness. Alrighty, so let's move on, we do have a full agenda tonight. We'll go into the consent agenda. We have school committee meeting minutes from December 2nd, both regular and executive session. We also have correspondence from the town of Tiverton laying out the annual budget process. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Oh, it's not working, I don't think.
It is.
It's okay, I'll just talk. You want me to do?
You can pull it closer if you...
How close are you? Oh, yeah, you took my...
It is working. It's working.
Yeah, but that's not, this is what...
Put the light underneath.
Yeah, I know, but turn your light on, see? Why is yours light up and mine don't?
You got the right...
Because you're the star. Again, I flossed. It's okay. Okay, so we have to vote, right?
Okay, let's move along. Okay, chairperson's remarks, Rias School Committee 101. For those of you who may have already received an email, and I'm not sure if the new members have or not, but I have forwarded your school email addresses to RIASK, which is the Rhode Island Association of School Committees. They are the group that all school committees are welcome to participate in, and we do. Every two years, they have this class, this school committee 101. Some of what we'll cover later on in our meeting tonight will be covered there as well, but they will, this is an all-day session, that they'll get far more in-depth on the topics. I know those of us who have been on the committee have been several times, and I will more than likely go again this January. It's January 18th at the Crown Plaza in Warwick, it's from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And if anyone doesn't already have the email, just let me know, and I'll forward it over to you so you can register. All business, consideration and possible vote. Approve the 2025 calendar, the meeting calendar. So we made some changes at our last meeting. I hope everyone had an opportunity to review it. Do I have a motion to approve the school committee meeting calendar for 2025?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments? Okay, no comments, all in favor? Deb? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Okay. New business, consideration and possible votes. We'll kick things off with a discussion around the heating issues within the district. Turn it over to Mrs. Sherman to start, and then Dr. Senkione.
Thank you, I appreciate this being on the agenda. I know parents are anxious to have a better understanding of what's going on and a timeline, which I know is, seems to be really hard to pinpoint given the shipping issues. So is it possible that we could kind of walk through from start to where we are to understand the process? I do have some questions, but perhaps if you take us through that timeline, it'll answer some of the questions? Thank you.
I wouldn't say I'm happy to do it, but certainly felt like I've been providing you this information all along the way, and it has been a little frustrating because we are in the dark sometimes about where things are and how we get things, and we're at the behold of the people we're working with. However, timeline is as follows. So it's the Monday after Thanksgiving, and Fort Barton's opened. Boilers are working fine, however, they're not putting the heat out into all the sections of the building. So we immediately called Train, it's a train system, and Train is serviced.
Did you have a microphone on?
Yep.
Okay.
And Train has always serviced our boilers at the three elementary schools. So they come in, and they say, well, the boiler's working, so it has to be the controls. So they spend the entire day of Monday working on the controls. At the end of the day, they can't get the heat to continue to go through the entire building. Come back on Tuesday, again, the boiler's working, but again, it's just not putting heat out to all sections of the buildings. So the second thing they try to do is they start looking at the filters. So they pull apart the boiler, and they find that there are some filters that are clogged. So they take them out, I was actually there, I saw them, they saw them pull these things apart, clean them out and all that, install them back in, and it doesn't fix the problem. So Train now is a little confused where to go next. So we call a company called ICM Mechanical out of Fall River. They show up on Wednesday, and on Wednesday, they diagnose two things, some faulty wires, and our valve, a three-way valve with a floater in it, and I guess that's very important, no longer works. And this is what actually disperses the heat throughout the entire building. What's difficult, or what made this challenging, is this valve, you can't purchase it off the shelf. You can't go to Home Depot, Lowe's, you can't go anywhere. It actually has to be fabricated. So they immediately start working on it, and they find a company in Arizona who can fabricate this for us. So we begin the process of getting this valve built and getting it back here to Tiverton. What has to come with the valve is a gasket and all the things that attach the gasket onto it. So we actually received the first part of it on Monday of last week, which made us hopeful, which is why my communication kept changing, because we're hopeful, we got the gasket, we got all the parts that go with it, we just need this valve, and it's on its way. Well, what we find out then on Tuesday from ICM Mechanical is this valve weighs over 165 pounds and can no longer be transported through your traditional UPS places like that. So you have to find what's called an LTI calendar carrier. So we begin the process of trying to get that. ICM Mechanical's been great, they're in touch with the people who created the valve, who built the valve in Arizona, and have been trying to get this here. They understand the urgency to get this here as soon as possible. Last Wednesday, we're on a call with ICM, another group called Portland Group, which is the supplier, and Boston Air, which is the distributor. So we're all in this phone call together, everyone understands the urgency, and they're trying to get this part here as soon as possible. We've been getting multiple updates from ICM Mechanical on a daily basis. So as of this past weekend, we actually have a tracking number on the part now, so we actually can see where it is. And this where it gets interesting, it's actually in New Jersey right now. So Brendan, Brendan and I are speaking, Brendan and Andre, and we say, look, we'll go get it. I said, look, I'll go get it personally. He looks at me and goes, Peter, you stay in the district, I'll go get it. Mike Mendez comes over and goes, I'll go get it. Well, it's because it's in the care of this carrier right now, we're not allowed to go get it. And we're kind of confused by that, but anyways, this is what we're being told, that it's there, it's going to be shipped out here. So the last bit of information is that this part is there in New Jersey, it's being shipped tomorrow, and we're supposed to receive it tomorrow. I guess before I close, and that's the timeline, a few points that I'd like to make. First, there's been an urgency to have this rectified as soon as possible at every step of the way, and hopefully you saw that, from the moment the heat wasn't working with the first phone call to Train on that Monday, to the second call to ICM Mechanical and everything else that's gone with it. I feel like our reaction's been timely and swift. Cost factors have never been a factor in this delay. We said, build the part, we'll figure it out, ship the part, we'll figure it out. In the interim, and this is the part that I guess I'm really proud of our staff and our parents, is we put together this educational plan to educate the students at Fort Barton. And as you know what it is, K1 and 2 have been going to Picasset, 3 and 4 have been going to, I'm assuming K1 and 2 have been going to Ranger, thank you, 3 and 4 have been going to Picasset. And the teachers from Fort Barton have been welcoming these two other elementary schools, students have been welcomed, all the teachers are teaching in highly effective educational places. Sarah and I have closely checked in on these people almost on a daily basis, and the reports back we're getting from our teachers is education's going on at a very high level. So we're very thankful of that, and we would expect nothing less from our teaching staff. And we've received very few complaints. I think people are understanding that, hopefully they're understanding we're doing everything we can to rectify this. And as of now, I would say the best, my best estimate, as I always hate to put this out there, is that the part arrives tomorrow, it's a four-hour installation, it takes four hours to heat the building back up to an acceptable level. So I suspect that'll all be done on Wednesday, and we'll be back into the building on Thursday. Maybe we'll, hopefully, and the only change is that part arrives very early, and we begin the work tomorrow, maybe in Wednesday, but if you were to ask me right now, I'd say probably Thursday.
Thank you, and I noticed you said that the heating systems or the boilers at the elementary schools are the same. Are they different from high school and middle school?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a preventative maintenance contract?
We don't. We've, we've, we've investigated that, some of the veteran members of the committee know that we've had this on a capital plan for years. It always comes down to a tough budget decision, and when we're laying off staff members and, you know, cutting everything else, that that just has not, it's probably, again, probably something we want to look at for our FY '26 budget to make sure that's in there.
At one time, we did maintain a maintenance contract going back a few years. I can remember voting, we voted for it, but maybe it was something that was cut during the budget process because of funds. That's why we...
Prior to my time, that is, you've got to be going back eight, nine, 10 years ago.
Oh, I'm probably going back eight years, seven, eight years. Yes, I am, I'm going back that long, before you, before you were here.
It would have been before my time as well.
But it is important, and I know it always comes down to the dollars and cents. It does, but...
And one of the things I learned, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, that we probably need a maintenance plan for the district, but a maintenance plan never would have identified that valve failing in that moment. That's just something that... It's very rare to have it happen. I know more about these valves now than I ever did, probably ever cared of them.
So is there any bit of preventative maintenance we can do on our end without an outside contract? Like, I don't know what it takes to check filters. You know, obviously at home, it's easy with our home heating systems, but these are commercial systems. So do we have preventive maintenance recommendations from the manufacturers of the equipment?
We do, yeah, especially the two new systems here at the middle school and high school. We have, you know, the control panels are very, highly technological, and we've trained people on how to use them.
Okay. So with those guidelines from the manufacturer, is there, what are we able to do? Or does everything have to be contracted out?
No, we do, we take care of things like checking the filters, checking the DCT units that are in all the classroom and make sure they're working. You know, I'm looking back there at Mike because I know I'm leaving out a lot. If you want to substantiate my answer here, feel free to come up. But there's as much as we can do, I believe, is taking place. Our custodian crew is very talented, and they know the systems in the building. Most of the head custodians have been in each one of these buildings for many years.
Yeah, what we do is we check the filters, change the filters annually, we check the belts that are in there, especially the rooftop units. This is all preventive maintenance that we can do. But these valves are one of those things, I've been here for 30 years, I've never seen this valve, a valve like this break in 30 years. So if it happens every 30 years, it's not too bad, I guess. But you don't want them to fail at all.
No, exactly. So, yeah, I completely understand about the valve. I guess my question is, like, the equipment, so are the recommendations annual, changing of filters? Is it quarterly? I just asked...
It's annual, usually annual, we change our filters, yes.
Okay. And then, given the situation like this, and forgive me for all my questions, I work in a different industry. In the industry I work in, when we have a situation like this come up, we put ourselves into what's called incident command mode, in which we're tracking all the steps of how we're working through it, what's our plan, and then after, we regroup a week after the incident to figure out what worked well, what could we have done better, and what's our contingency plan going forward? Do we have a system like that in place to, just to identify, if this ever happens again in another building, what are we doing to make sure we're better prepared for it? If that makes sense?
I was, let me, let me start it regarding incident command. I mean, we're a small district, so it's Brendan, Mike, and myself, and so, and the principal of the building, wherever the thing is. So, you know, that immediately takes place, and we immediately rely upon people like ICM Mechanical, Train, or Next Gen, who does the middle school and high school, to come in and give us great advice on what the next step is. And we certainly, as hopefully we've demonstrated in this situation here, taking every step possible to rectify the situation as soon as possible.
Right, and I realize it's different from industry to industry. I just want to make sure we've absorbed all we can from this situation. We've documented what did go well, so that, God forbid, this happens somewhere else, where we're able to turn things over quicker if possible. Again, I know the valve is a specialty thing, and it was not predicted that this would happen. Just preparedness, contingency plan, you know, what happens if this happens again? And so it leads me to my other question of the high school that same day also had an issue, which I know it was resolved pretty much that day. Was it, what was that issue that caused the heating disruption there?
That issue was, it was a low-pressure system, the pressure went, the pressure in the system went down, so it did not operate the way it should have been operating. We had a glycol system here, we had to add glycol to it to bring up the pressure, and it was resolved. There was a, it's a, I can't even think of the name of it, but it's a controller that opens and closes three-way valve. That had let go somewhat.
Yep.
It was the controller, not the valve. That is, been resolved within a couple days of what happened. It was, actually, it was a transformer that was about that big that let go.
And that's...
They were able to get it the next day and put it in, but we manually, manually override it.
Okay.
So we had heat almost immediately.
So given that we had two buildings that were put to the test, have we looked at the other three buildings to make sure all is looking well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was done that same week.
Okay. Thank you, I know it was a lot of questions, I'm just trying to understand the process and what we can do going forward. Thank you.
That's a good question.
Don't go anywhere. I want to give out, there's the opportunity to ask questions as well.
No problem.
Elaine, did you have any other questions?
I just wanted to ask, this, the Fort Barton issue, that's not something we could have predicted by doing anything differently. It just happened.
It just...
So we could stand there and look at that system?
You can run that system every day, and you would know.
Just, okay.
It gives some perspective on that, and talking to ICM Mechanical, and this is a company that's been in the industry many years, their quote to us was, they've only seen this happen three times in 30 years. So it's pretty rare.
Freaky Friday. Thank you, thanks, Mike.
No problem.
Mrs. Parkett, did you have anything you wanted to ask?
I do. I was lucky enough to be working when the elementary schools opened up. They were brand new, and I looked at the boiler, the whole system, the setup was extremely intensive. Given the system, there's no alerts on that system, I mean, it's highly computerized. There's no, there's no alerts on that system.
No alerts on the system.
That's crazy.
Yep. We, in the past, I put a blinking light outside, so if the boiler went down on a lockout where it didn't have fuel, or something like that happened, we got that detection system, but that is it. We are now getting in the process of putting an alert through the tech department to give me an alert immediately if something happens. So we'll have that system shortly to be working.
And how will you be able to test that to make sure that that system's in place, that that system's working, and that system hasn't gone down?
No.
There's no way to do that?
It is.
No, I just have a hard time believing a 15-year-old boiler would have issues like this, that's all, just...
I think they're all well past their warranty phase, if I'm not correct.
Including the middle school and high school.
Yeah, yeah.
And last year, it was two buildings. It was Ranger and Fort Barton, not Ranger, I'm sorry, Picasset and Fort Barton last year.
I guess they, you know, just my own personal twist on this, they don't make things like they used to. I just had to replace a 10-year-old refrigerator that I expected to last for 20. It's, you know, it's very difficult to understand how mechanically things do not last any longer. And I think it's something we have to keep in mind in our planning in the future as well.
Mrs. Polish, did you have anything?
First of all, I do want to echo Dr. Senkione's sentiments with regard to the staff and how well they've adjusted and how well the kids seem to be doing in this situation. You know, I commend them for taking good care and making sure that the kids are in school and safe and warm and learning. I do think that we need to seriously look into preventative maintenance plans, contracts, but, you know, with the understanding that we'll have to balance the cost versus the reward on that too. You know, not having anything in front of us right now, you know, it's something I think we definitely need to take a look at for the 2026 budget cycle.
May Madam Chair just know that we've gone out to bid for those services, and we'll present it to the school committee once we receive them back.
Very well. I do have one question. School vacation's coming up, and obviously, you know, this is, this one in February, this is going to be when we're at our lowest temperatures of the year. Do you have any plans to be checking on these schools? I assume you don't shut the heat down completely in any of the schools, but do you have plans to be checking on these buildings during vacation?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, we haven't yet asked for any kind of estimates on how much dollar-wise this is going to cost us, and I assume we will be getting that information at our next meeting, because by then, hopefully, it'll be behind us. But I can well imagine it'll be in the thousands. We have a budget that cannot withstand that this year. We also have no fund balance that we can commit to this, and this is something that I strongly recommend this committee moving forward to remember that a fund balance is something we could have used to help us in a time like this. We will more than likely have to turn to the town to ask for the funding for this major repair. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I think, I think all the other questions I may have had you asked, Deb answered.
So going back to Jocelyn's points about the incident team, a couple of things. And I think, you know, Jocelyn already spoke to it, we don't need to make decisions tonight, but I think we kind of have to have, you know, is it possible to have standing contingency plans where, you know, certain grades we can go distance learning, other grades probably not, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, that isn't something we want to go to even just once. So, you know, again, I don't think we're going to resolve that tonight, but to Jocelyn's point, that, you know, as much as we can sort of think about after the fact that we can put in place and have, and maybe have some standing plans, some standing communications, probably the better. What did we do while the heat was out to make sure that we didn't have other issues, like freezing pipes?
We brought in some space heaters over at Fort Barton, and we monitored the temperature inside the building on a daily basis all through the weekend. Temperature never got below 40 degrees inside the building.
Perfect, okay. And then, I know that it's been answered, but I'm going to ask it again just so that you have the opportunity to, to answer it in a public session, is why did we not go to the middle school like we did in the past? Why did we split the way that we did?
Yeah, well, when we went to the middle school, we learned some valuable lessons. And that, that building is not designed for kindergarten, first, second, third graders. The bathrooms don't work, the cafeteria doesn't work, the furniture doesn't work. We had students that, on that day, for that day, we were able to get through it, again, through the dedication of our staff. But elementary kids belong in an elementary school, they deserve to be in a space that they best can learn in, and there's several other reasons with that, but just functionally, the middle school's not a great place for kindergarten, first, and second grade.
So that would be something, you know, like, in, in review of this incident, in review of that incident, we learned that was, that was not a...
You may recall in Ranger, that was a morning decision, like, we didn't have time.
No, I remember, yep, they were there, and we had to move, yeah, it wasn't bussing, I mean, they were in the building.
Exactly.
Yep, yep. And then, finally, I think it's just, again, contingency, thinking through the incident, it's just maybe a lesson in communication that we're probably communicate, but without being overly optimistic, probably plan for the worst and hope for the best, because I think it was, I know it was very frustrating for you, I know it was very frustrating for you, it was very frustrating for our parents, that, oh, we're back in today, oh, we're back in Friday, oh, we're back in, you know, that, that, you know... in Friday, oh, we're back in, you know, that, that, you know, and it wasn't your fault and I'm, like I said, I, I would have driven and gotten it. I'm sure, you know, lots of people would have and it was frustrating, but maybe, again, just kind of looking back at the incident, sort of a lesson in communication.
Yeah, partly, but partly it's just what we had in front of us. Like every day it was changing. Like every day, we, some days we were told, you're getting the part tomorrow and the other day, then we'd get a call the next day saying, nope, by the way, no, it's still in Pennsylvania or it's still in, so, yeah, I see what you're saying, but we were only as good as what we knew.
No, I, yeah, agree, yep. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just one.
Sure.
Just thank you for walking us through the timeline and answering the questions. Thank you to the staff for being so flexible in not only moving to those schools, but the other schools being ready to take in those students and teachers and of course, thank you to the parents for flexibility as well.
Sure.
I've been approached by parents that are asking if a school committee member could go in and look at, just walk through, do a walkthrough of the buildings. And I know that was something that used to be done years ago before Dr. Sanchioli came in. And I had took it upon myself to contact Councilman Perry, I guess he's the liaison between the town council and the school committee, and to do a walkthrough of the buildings with them, with him. So I was wondering what everybody felt about that.
We're not on the agenda to discuss that this evening.
Even though it's the heating?
No, the, one thing we, and this is something we'll probably go through a little bit, but it is the school administration's place to be handling this and the school committee members are not, we're not the ones with our hands on the trigger, if you will, on the boiler or on any specific issues within the schools. We are the governing body. So I, and again, we're not really on, on the agenda to discuss any kind of collaboration or visits in school, but it's not, it's not our place and it's certainly not the place of the town council either, to be within the schools, especially in the school day without an invitation from the administration.
That's my fault, I take responsibility for that. Like I said, I took it upon myself.
No, and, and, you know, I totally understand being new to this, how one would imagine it differently, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, great. I think we are ready to move on to our next item on the agenda, accept Up With School Arts Grant.
I'm going to take that, Madam-
Mrs. Freeman is not with us this evening.
I got that, Madam Chair. In your packet you have the grant, it was written by our two art teachers, Kevin Kalistron and Adam Tracy, they do a great job seeking all the revenue they can to support their programs. And Up With School Art, you've approved these grants in the past, these members who've been on the committee appoint in the past. The amount requested was $2,000, they awarded the grant, you can see the details on the document there, so I ask you to accept the grant with gratitude.
Do I have a motion to accept the Up With School Arts Grant in the amount of $2,000?
So moved and thanks, as always, to our, our high school administrators and our terrific art educators. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And for discussion, I also would like to thank our teachers and our educators who, who are always out there trying to bring new, new funds and new experiences for our students. So with that, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Next we have FY '24 audit extension, Dr. Sanchioli.
Thank you. As you know, we have a brand-new business manager who started after the school year. We had a little gap with the people in our office due to a lot of events there. As a result, we've had some changes that obviously you know in our budget, so our finance directors asked for an extension to have the audit completed until June 31st. I think when you look at all the reasons and rationale, as you've seen outlined in the document that Brendan provided you, it makes sense. We want to do this right, we want to make sure that the documentation is correct and just needs a little more time. So he worked with the town and people have signed off on the extension to the 31st, making the school committee aware.
Thank you, this doesn't require a vote?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me, this says extension till January 31st, 2025, is that?
That's correct.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you said June.
No, January, I'm sorry.
Just a quick comment, I want to thank Treasurer Soret for working so closely with Brendan and being understanding of the situation.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have consider and vote to approve resolution authorizing the sale of 317 Market Street, Warren, Rhode Island pursuant to Rhode Island general law 16-3.1 to 10. Mr. Scangio.
Sorry, there's a time issue. We had, we had that, he's, oh, he backed up, I'm sorry. He's bending down, time issue.
Surprise, your turn.
So what we're asking the school committee to agree to is the sale-
Your microphone?
The sale of the school facility, EBECK, it's their, the majority of their asset. It's a piece of property on Market Street in Warren. This, the Board of Superintendents eventually going to dissolve that organization because they found that it was not meeting, sufficiently meeting the, the needs of students. The result of that would be liquidation of assets. So at that point, the school committee, excuse me, the Board of Superintendents hired a real estate agent, marketed the property, we were given a range of likely price that the property would sell for. Property, not going to give information publicly, but we have a purchase and sales agreement for sale of the property of $3.2 million, which was a little bit over the forecasted sales price of the property. So at this point, we are getting to the point of closing and there is a specific state statute that is mentioned in my letter, which requires all school committees to vote on the liquidation of any substantial asset of this collaborative. So that's why it's here. In order to fulfill title requirements, a resolution was drawn, which I believe is in your packet, which establishes the fact that the committee considered and presumably votes in favor of it. Now I have to tell you, the statute provides that of the, of the eight members, at least five have to approve the sale. Five so far have approved the sale, you're number six. So hopefully you follow along and it will be unanimous. Do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. When exactly will EBECK be dissolving?
It'll be dissolving after this asset is sold, so my guess is probably going to be sometime between February and June.
Okay. Mentioned in this agreement is a lease buyback.
Yes.
Explain to me why we need that?
Originally, it was contemplated that the sale was going to happen sometime this month. That has been postponed because of the due diligence period also built into the contract. So it appears now that the closing is scheduled for the end of January. So EBECK has some assets that it's in the process of divesting. One of the main sources of revenue and one of the main sources of businesses were renting out science kits. We had the science kits evaluated by a company from Michigan who also sells the kits. The amount of value that they placed on them would not make it worthwhile to sell and to ship them. So what the Board of Superintendents decided to do instead is to fulfill and terminate the leases with all the school districts by preparing and delivering the science kits and asking school districts to keep them. So they were in the process of doing that and they felt that they couldn't complete that at least until the end of December, if not sometime in January.
Thank you. Have you got any rough estimate as to how much dividend we'll be receiving from the sale?
Well, the sale is 3.2. There are eight members, there's a 6% commission and there'll be some cost to, with respect to the closing and there'll be a payoff to, on the two mortgages. There's a line of credit, which may have a small amount on it, about $450,000 on the first mortgage. So Peter and I did a rough estimate, between $300,000 and $400,000, nothing closer to $350, when we're done.
We can use that. Okay. Thank you. And I do have one last and I'll go ahead and yield after that. This, the resolution that's in our packet is not completed as far as putting the verbiage for dividend in there, do you have a copy?
I do, Peter actually handwrote one and I have it right here.
All righty, that's, those are the only questions I have. Does anyone else have any questions?
I have the same question. I'll release that.
Good questions.
The sale proceeds, Peter, has that been worked into the budget discussion already this, for this year?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And, and I know we're not discussing it tonight, but I just specifically because I know people are going to hear like, ooh, proceeds, you're going to get an eighth of that, but we, it's already in, it's already something that our Director of Finance is considering as far as our this year's budget. Okay, thank you.
Could I add one more point? So in addition in the dissolution process, we, we've hired Jim Dutren Associates, who is an accounting firm, and he's handled liquidations of other collaboratives before. So in the process of that, and this is more for the public as, as well as for the board, he has agreed with RIDE and the Auditor General on a process to do an audit. Because they're not going to transact much business from this point forward, they're not going to be required to do the same audit in terms of quality, but there will be an audit that'll be performed, that information will be made public and certainly to the board at that time, so we could feel comfortable that all the assets and all the money has been appropriately accounted for. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of 317 Market Street in Warren pursuant to Rhode Island general law 16-3 dot 1 to 10?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
And all those in favor? It is unanimous, you have your sixth group. Thank you. Okay, next, Discuss Health and Wellness Subcommittee and Refer Policies 1142 and 1143 to the Policy Subcommittee. And so for those of you who are new to the committee, the, generally, when there is a recommendation or a desire to take a look at a specific policy, it is done so by, it comes through the, the school committee. Mrs. Sherman has really taken the lead on reinvigorating the Health and Wellness Subcommittee and has asked that the Policy Subcommittee review these two policies for potential updates. So do I have a motion to refer Policies 1142 and 43 to the Policy Subcommittee for Evaluation?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Do we have any discretion?
I guess just a question for me, being that I'm new and I don't know how totally this works, when it goes to the Policy Committee, I'm able to provide feedback on where I think revisions should be, even though I'm not part of that?
Yes, you're welcome to do so. I, I would ask that you do so before we meet.
Sure.
And Ken and I are the Policy Subcommittee, so when we set up the meeting, you'll know it well enough in advance.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
If she chose to, she could attend the meeting, no, it's an open meeting. I'm not saying she wants to.
She can attend, but she doesn't, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, she could attend, she'd just listen to-
She would have to basically just listen, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So feedback would be provided, right, in advance?
Yep.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, School Committee Orientation, Mr. Scangio, it's, it's a long time coming, but we've gotten here.
It's my pleasure. Podium?
Sure.
I might end up walking around a little bit too. Hello, everybody. This is probably the favorite thing that I get to do for school committees. At the outset, I wanted to tell you that the School Committee Association, as mentioned previously, also has an orientation for School Committee 101, which lasts all day. Typically, and this year as well, our firm is invited to do the last leg of that, hopefully we can keep everybody alive with that. To give you a presentation, in a lot of ways, it's pretty similar to the stuff that we're going to talk about today. But we think it's still worthwhile if you go to that. There are some sections that those of you who've gone to in the past, especially around budgeting, enrollment data around the state, how the state's formula comes together, which is really enlightening. And I think it helps you a lot as you go through your own budget processes, a lot of information you could pick up. Also, my experience is that you all tend to sit at your own tables, but if you have the opportunity also to sit at other tables and talk to other people and network, you're going to find that there are a lot of people there that have a substantial amount of experience. Everybody, you're all in the same boat, everybody's very inviting and they all love to share the information and acquired knowledge that they've had, especially people like the members on this board that have been on a committee for a long time, which creates a wealth of knowledge that's easily shared. So you should take advantage of that because you can create these contacts and then call people up afterwards. And you'll probably be introduced to a number of them, so please take advantage of that. So what I prepared for you today was a book, and I guess it's a bit old-fashioned, I could have sent it to you digitally. For those of you that don't have my email, you could ask for it from Peter, happy to send this to you digitally, but I wanted you to have this tonight and hopefully keep it as a resource because there's some information that I think will be helpful. So I'm going to start off just by telling you what's in the book and why it's here, then we're going to go over the two presentations to the extent we have time. And I'll probably buzz through both of them because we'd be going through them in a lot more detail when I see all of you in Warwick at the Main School Committee 101 meeting. So first, there is a booklet that we put together called Essential Knowledge for Effective Governance, and this substantially is all the comments that I would make to you today. So we're just going to move over that. Second, because very often we receive requests of, when, when can people speak at meetings and how could they speak at meetings and what rights do they have, what limits and parameters are around those, we put together a memo for you to read, which is clear and concise, that explains those parameters for you. So if you ever wonder when, when you have a large group of people, do they have a right to talk, or all, this kind of explains that and gives you some context. And I'm sure that'll, that'll happen. I've been to a number of meetings where you have had a bunch of passionate people that come to the meeting and like to express their opinion, which is good. The next tab is called Developing a Plan to Reduce an Accumulated Deficit. So what I did is I put together information from the Auditor General's website. You could also go to the Auditor General's website, but a lot of this comes from it. It's a little bit of an explainer. This year you may be in a deficit situation, so I think it would make sense for you just to read through it so you're oriented to what happens when a deficit is recognized and the mandatory steps that the school committee has to take. So it's likely we'll be taking some of those this year unless something different happens. After Tab 3, there's a short section, which we won't go through tonight, but we will go through in the School Committee 101, which is just a little quiz, kind of, and what happens in different circumstances and we would just discuss how school committees talk about certain circumstances. I don't think we're going to have time to go through this tonight, but it might be helpful for you to read it. These come from a book, which was authored by a gentleman who is a psychologist from California who spent 20 years on a school committee in California. The title of his book is How Not to Be a Horrible School Committee Person.
Which tab is that, 3 or 4?
That's, right after Tab 3. Yep. Called, the first one is Confide in a Reporter, yeah. So it's a quick read. This is substantially taken from his book and I think it'll be helpful because it'll orient you to at least the four specific situations, and I hope you have the opportunity to read it. Then I've included four statutes, which is next tab, which is, starts off with the Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards, which was passed by the General Assembly. Much of this has been incorporated into your School Committee bylaws already and state law requires you to adopt these. After this statute, I'm going to refer back to this, a major piece of legislation was passed by the General Assembly in 2019. It's referred to commonly in Rhode Island as the Education Reform Act and it reorganized the way school committees operate to a degree, but Superintendent- committees operate to a degree, but superintendents substantially, and also school principals substantially. We're gonna talk about this in more detail. What I did, just to give you an idea of the changes and the amendments to the statute, is I copied the statute in red-line format, so that shows you the old statute, and it shows you the new statute. Everything in green is added to the law, and everything red and crossed out, obviously, is crossed out. So, we're gonna go through that in a little bit of detail tonight.
I think they have all of the green just over time.
No, one shot.
What?
Yeah. It was a substantial change. Finally, the two presentations of the topics that I'm gonna talk about tonight, I've given you a photocopy of all of both of them. The first one is OMA, and you notice it says shamelessly copied from the Rhode Island Attorney General's presentation. Once a year in July, the Attorney General has a fabulous presentation that they put on at Roger Williams Law School. You'll all be invited as public officials. I go, and other colleagues in my office go as well. And they update you on the statute, and it's an orientation about OMA and APRA, the Access to Public Records Act. So, it's really helpful to go to that. It's always pleasant to be, you know, in Bristol at that time of year. Some great restaurants there, so you could do both. Spend three quarters of the day listening to the Attorney General talk. They go through all the updated cases, and you can get a drink before you go home. Not alcoholic, of course, because you'll be driving. And then, finally, a copy of the presentation that we're gonna start with tonight, which is a takeoff of the first brochure that I gave you in the beginning of this, which is Essential Knowledge for Effective Governance. So, we hope that this kind of information is really helpful to you. A number of attorneys in my office put together, and I think it could be a good resource for you to review. So, are we ready? Could we start with the other presentation? If I go too fast, slow me down. If I talk too long, have Sarah kick me in the leg.
Okay. So, just for, so we're all on the same page. Are you looking for us to interrupt you and ask questions as you go, or would you prefer to get to a certain stopping point?
I'd be happy for you to ask questions anytime you have them.
Okay.
Because I know Deb will. I was just gonna ask if you'd like to get through it before you got questions.
Thank you.
I like questions, because the presentation could be more organic if you guys have questions as we go along, and that might lead to discussions, and then we could skip over topics as we go along.
Well, and I'm thinking, like Kim and Jocelyn, it's like if you can think of a situation that you want an answer to, this is the time.
That would be good.
Yeah.
The only thing that I have to question you, if I don't answer the question, is because I'd rather give you legal advice on a topic in executive session. Okay? So, if that's that, I'll tell you that. I'll say, it's a topic we should discuss in executive session, and that's what I'm doing. That's gonna be my plan. So, first, I'm not sure you can read this, but at least you have it on here. Can you all hear me? Okay. So, this presentation is built around issues like, what are my job responsibilities? What am I supposed to do sitting behind that black table? What are the parameters of my job? What are the boundaries of my job? And what am I not only supposed to do, what am I not supposed to do? And that's hopefully some of the things that you learned from this presentation. We have to start off with this whole deal. That just gonna get me what I want. I just need to read. We have to start off with the Rhode Island Constitution. The significance of that is the Constitution of the State of Rhode Island provides that the General Assembly is the School Committee for the State of Rhode Island. So, what does that mean, and what is the impact on the School Committee? So, a lot of people run for School Committee, and they think they've run to this position that was, that has some independent power. And in fact, it really doesn't. The General Assembly has all the power of education. It decides what education is appropriate. Ultimately, it could decide what curriculum exists in schools. It created you. So, that is profound, because that means it can set the rules that guide you and tell you what to do, and it frequently does. There are over 350 statutes that deal directly with education that tell you what to do. So, if you came to this position with the theory that no one is gonna tell me what to do, I'm gonna just exercise my judgment, it kinda ran for the wrong position, because this area is very technical. There are a lot of rules that we're all gonna have to live by. So, keep that in mind. The reason why I mention it is because if you have a different point of view, it's very frustrating for you when the eye of the superintendent or the chair says, we can't do that because there are a lot of rules that we have to follow. And you all took an oath, just when I asked if I had to take an oath to uphold the laws of the State of Rhode Island and federal government, you all took the exact same oath when you were sworn in, and that's what we're required to do. A lot of people find that difficult, especially in their first year sitting on the School Committee. So, we have to remember that the committee is created by the General Assembly. Its powers are limited by federal and state law. As I said, if you don't like being told what to do, this probably isn't the kind of position for you, because you don't have unfettered right to decide everything that you want. And if you don't like the law, you still have to follow it, and we all took an oath to do that.
Before you go any further, I need to know. 493 slash 3473. Is that somebody's phone number?
That is the most current number of statutes that exist. But you can call me anytime.
Thank you.
The 3473, as of last year, were the number of cases that were decided between Rye Superior Court and the Supreme Court.
About the education.
Yes. That interpret all those laws. So, we have a lot of rules. That's my point with this. And it frequently is very technical. As I said, you're a creature of the state. The General Assembly is Frankenstein. You are Frankenstein's monster. I think that's the best way to think of it. So, what the General Assembly does is they loan you powers to exercise on their behalf, within the parameters that they set up, right? Additionally, there are other players that they loan powers to. The State Department of Education, for instance, has loaned significant powers in the area of education. They're given the right to make regulations which have the force of law unless the General Assembly has passed a law that specifically contradicts with that regulation. So, they have significant authority. You have the ability to pass policies. Those have the effect of law in your district. Again, if they don't contradict another outstanding law or regulation. The most important power you're gonna find that you have is policy. Three or four areas I'm gonna identify. But when you set policy, as long as it conforms with the law, you're basically allowing the superintendent and the school district power to operate. That's a very significant power. And that's one of the main focuses of what you do sitting on this body. Besides the Department of Education, as we're gonna find, there are specific statutes now that create two other major players in your district. The superintendent of schools is created by statute, and the position of principal since 2019 is created by statute before it wasn't. The significance of that is we're gonna see, the General Assembly gave you certain powers. They gave your superintendent certain powers. They gave your principal certain powers. And all three of those actors need to respect the fact that they have to exercise those powers in a reasonable way. And what I always tell the school committees is if you don't like the way your superintendent has acted, or if he's not complying with the law, or if you don't like the discretion, you find the superintendent that does, as long as that one applies to the degree. Same thing with principals. Their principals are following the law, but they're engaging in their business in a way that school committee finds objectionable. That information percolates down through the superintendent. He evaluates those individuals, and he makes a decision as to whether or not they should be included in their committees.
But they still may report to the superintendent.
Correct. You're gonna get to that point. That's a really important point. But so, we have to, while you don't have the power to control what happens specifically in the district in an administrative sense, the policies that you create do. One good example of that is a hiring policy. If you have a good, robust hiring policy, that could set parameters for the superintendent when he appoints someone, or when a principal makes a lack of innovation. The method by which somebody is selected, you could create in policy, and that policy has to be followed. In terms of income, that any of your administrators can be set by policy, or you could create guide rails around those policies, excuse me, around administrative discretion, in terms of how much the administrator should be paid. Additionally, one of your powers is you get to fulfill contracts. In this particular area, what I suggest to school committees in terms of hiring, is you delegate that power to the superintendent, because the superintendent has the sole power now to appoint, giving you a draft policy on that. Your policy will give, tell him how he exercises broadly his discretion, how much money broadly he could spend on the administrators, and you pass a template contract requiring you to use that contract in your department. That's usually the most efficient way the district would go in terms of policy. But ultimately, the school committee does have the right, if it wants the prerogative, to vote on and enforce contracts. But keep in mind, you shouldn't exercise that in a way that frustrates the superintendent's statutory power to select or to press him out from the district. Let's talk about your roles and responsibilities. So, if you would tab over to 4.
That's 4?
Yeah. Right after Tab 4 is the first statute. So, you'll notice the first thing on the top of that statute, it says that you, School Committee shall adopt. The General Assembly found that these principles of ethics are things that you are required to abide by. And if you read them through carefully, you will be happy to abide by them, because they all make sense. They're all fair and reasonable, and they create an environment for a functional school. So, they're very important, worthwhile. We're gonna hit just a couple that I think are important, and I always claim that, and hopefully you will too. So, if you look at Section A1, recognize that the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of our students. I think everybody here would agree with that. My first act through practice was thirty-five years ago. It was an old gentleman, and everybody could be on the same page. We were talking about hospital committees, 400% of them, and they act. And he said, you know, Ben, whatever I made a decision, the superintendent became a chair, and said, I always focus on what's best for kids. And he said, every time I've done that, every time the committee has done that, the decision is right. Even though there could be opinions as to what that is, but the majority rats itself are on that kind of interest, you can't be wrong. So, please keep that thought and for a hundred in mind as you make decisions. I think this committee has always done that, from the extent I've seen all of you. So, that's good news. Everybody is here because they love education and they're focused on that issue and the interests of kids, which is great. Not so everywhere. Another section. Your critical responsibilities are to select the superintendent, to define his responsibilities, to evaluate them on a regular basis. However, it also says, without engaging in the administrative process. So, you have to be really careful. Even though you wanna be helpful to an administrator, you have to remember that if you are not the administrator, you were elected to a committee. The committee acts as a group, and it can only act through the School Committee meeting, and when the School Committee authorizes one of you to engage in a certain kind of action. That's really important, and it's a requirement of the General Assembly, because even though you may have a knowledge base that's applicable, to the extent you start to administrate, you create dysfunction within the administration.
So, let's think of a practical example, just to bring it up. So, I have a parent that comes to me and says, you know what, I wanna tour those buildings. I wanna see. My responsibility would be to go to the superintendent, let the superintendent know I have a party that would like to tour the buildings, and if he can rearrange it, not arrange it, says I just, it's not appropriate, whatever, but I could then say, put it on an agenda, ask the chair, put it on the agenda, please, and we discuss how we can make that happen.
Yes. There is a specific statute that gives school committee members the right to go into schools. But the way you just described it is the way you do that. So, an individual member has no right, no authority acting as an individual. You can only act under authority of the majority of the school. That is so what that is. Now, chairs generally are given more authority, because they represent you as a body. And so, very frequently, the chair becomes your representative in a number of different ways, including exercising some discretion when you deal with the superintendent or members on occasion. So, there's some leeway with respect to the chair. And depending on the culture of different districts, the chairs have more or less authority. So, you can expect that the chair on occasion may inform you of a certain circumstance, or may organize something. But the law is very clear on that. School committee members on a individual basis don't have a right to get involved in administrative activities. When you need to do something, like do a building, you organize that through the committee, through the chair, or the superintendent.
So, here it comes to me, has to be mined about this particular teacher. I go to the superintendent. I let the superintendent deal with it. If that isn't adequate, I go to the chair, and then I work that way.
Correct. With respect to that point, which is another important, I'm gonna raise one of my points, which is great.
I'm trying to.
Which is great.
As long as I've been doing this, these questions still come up.
For you. So, you all ran for political office because you wanted to improve the district, and because you wanted to represent your constituents. One of the hottest things, I think, for someone who has run for political office, is to be hamstrung by the law and not be able to do certain things. But in fact, if you're not gonna get involved in the administration, we just discussed, the law doesn't permit you to, and why you should, because you create dysfunction, you can't put yourself in a position where you allow constituents to come to you and move your problems up, because you're not. First of all, in an ultimate sense, it's the committee that is individual, that's anyone. Second is you have to respect the chain of command. A lot of parents, maestrians, the problem of a teacher or a principal, and rather than following the steps internally in the administrative process, which could result in, they know what you all, or they voted for you all, and they want you to take some kind of immediate action, and it's difficult. I had this conversation on Saturday about the fitness program. It's very difficult sometimes, considering you ran to help people and make things better, to tell someone, I'm sorry, there's a chain of command. You have to go through this process to get there first. There's a very practical reason for that as well, because there's this appeal process. So, say there's an issue between a student and a teacher, and their parents are strong advocates for their kids, as they should be. So, they talk to the teacher, and it doesn't work. Then, they talk to the principal, and it doesn't work. The next step is it'll go through the superintendent's office, or the assistant superintendent's office, and they'll try to solve the problem. If they solve the problem, but it's still not satisfactory to your parent, ultimately, in a lot of circumstances, they get to come to you and have a care of it. If you've been involved in talking to that individual, and heard facts, heard information before the rest of the committee, you could be seen to be biased. And as a result, any decision that school committee could subsequently be overturned if that gets approved. So, you could actually upend what happens at a school committee meeting and school committee meeting in a court, you would say. So, you have to be really careful of that. It's really significant. So, in my experience, the best thing to do is to refer the parent to the superintendent. The superintendent will identify where in the chain of command that person should be in terms of an appeal or a problem resolution process. But the superintendent will also, because this issue is now on his radar, will pay attention to it and make sure that he will resolve the problem for the best of his ability.
And speaking from experience, at least for Mrs. Pavo and Mrs. Polish, we have sat as a hearing authority in the past with student issues, as well as employee issues.
Yes.
So, this applies throughout.
Another big area is where you make this Another big areas where you make decisions are personnel issues, termination, potentially discipline, grievance matters. So people from your union call you up and talk to you about a grievance, and then that grievance comes from employees, the hearing office, so that could be the basis to overturn your ultimate decision if it goes to arbitration. Happy to tell you, you have very few grievances, which is really good. I can't remember. Peter, when was the last one that we had?
Wow.
Yeah? Multiple years. Multiple. Yeah, you have good relations with your union, which is wonderful, and you have good relations with most of your employees. Now, all your employees are out there.
I have a question.
Elaine has a question.
Ben?
Yes.
Excuse me. I have, so I have a parent who calls me and says, I have this issue with my child and whatever. And I tell the parent that chain of command is he needs to speak to the superintendent, explain to the parent that superintendent was going on. And the parent tells me that he already spoke to the superintendent and there's no resolution. Then would it be proper for us to deal with that parent in a, at a school committee meeting in the executive seat? Where do we go from there? If the parent tells me they've already spoken with the superintendent, no resolution, I want action, you know?
Yes. It depends on the kind of issue with it. So let's say it's an issue of a grade.
Okay.
And a parent thinks that a child has been given inappropriate grade, and that's going to have a huge impact on maybe their class rank, whether or not they get to move forward a year, or it's going to have an impact on their application to go to an institution of higher learning. So it's a significant issue for that person. And they feel that the grade was wrong, maybe the math was misapplied, or the algorithm that that teacher used to grade was done incorrectly or inequitably. So there's grading policy. And ultimately, that decision, if the superintendent decides, I think it was applied correctly and it's part of the policy, so the grade's going to stay, that issue can come to you in the context of a hearing.
Okay.
That's the typical kind of complaint that you would get that would come to you, or a student suspension, or other substantial discipline. However, there is a whole other area of the law, special education, that is not in your wheelhouse. The reason for that is the federal government, and we have mirrored regulations on the law, requires a separate process that does not include the school committee. So in that kind of circumstance, when the administration has made a final decision and a parent doesn't agree with it, they have to ask for a due process hearing, an arbitrary respect for RIDE, and that hearing process plays out. You guys cannot be involved in that process, because federal law doesn't allow you to.
But in Elaine's situation, that has to be, that appeal has to be brought forward by the parent, not the school board.
So if we move forward to the next statute, and I believe, it's on page three of nineteen, you will see, this book and the statute, you will see the General Assembly outlined your jobs and duties. So this is your job description from the General Assembly. And it's long, and it's weighty, but none of these deal with your actual administration of the school district. All of these talk about what your general responsibility is with respect to the school district. So for instance, the entire care, control, and management of public school interests vested in the local school committee, as opposed to any other body in the state. The committee, as opposed to the other side of municipal government, for instance, unless the town charter says something different. The committee must implement federal and state laws and rules and regulations from RIDE. And as I've mentioned before, it doesn't make a difference whether you agree to them on a philosophic basis or not. The committee has overall policy responsibility for the district, and I've already pointed out the part about administrative responsibility. A couple of other things that I'd like you to note generally is, if you look on the bottom of page three of nineteen, you'll see what's been crossed out in this statute. Previous to 2021, when this came into effect, and I believe your school committee association supported, in an umbrella sense, this whole package of legislation. The school committee used to essentially have the ultimate power to appoint personnel. The General Assembly decided that that wasn't appropriate, it removed that power from school committees, and it now vests it in the superintendent of schools. And if you flash forward to page, if I skip a little page. Yep, page five of nineteen, I'm sorry. You'll see the superintendent's job description from the General Assembly, and over on page six, you'll see what the General Assembly added. So items number six, number seven, number eight, number nine. Now, all personnel are appointed by the superintendent. If it's a personnel whose position is derived in a school site, it's based on a recommendation from a principal, which superintendent would act on. If it's anyone in the central office or has district or central office responsibility, it's appointed by the superintendent of schools. Now, the superintendent does give you notice, and I know in the past you've asked on occasion that if it's a significant position, they show up, and he's always, superintendent always asks that personnel to show up, so you could recognize them, or you could meet them on occasion. So if we move over to page eight of nineteen, and I'm departing from this because it's already twenty past eight, you'll see all these green blocks. These are all the new duties that school principals were given. For a number of years, school principals crumbled a bit, because they were given responsibility for the performance of their schools, but they very often didn't have the opportunity to pick the ingredients that went into the pot. So their argument is, how can you blame us for the taste of the soup if all we get to do is turn the gas on? The General Assembly heard that, and they created their statutory position of principal, which didn't exist before, and they gave them a job description as well. The important features of that statute, and it kind of defines the way principals operate now, is principals first are responsible, I say, from everything from light bulbs to personnel to toilet seats, based on this statute. They have the whole ball of wax. I think that that statute was, or that section was created in response to what the General Assembly saw in larger school districts, elements of dysfunction, and they wanted to create more decentralized management style. That's why they created this. Should it be applicable to a district our size? Probably not, but the General Assembly very often passes a law that's one size for all. So we were lumped into that. If you think about it, for a district this size, you would want to have one person dealing with personnel throughout the whole district for consistent application of Clark-Dubagging agreements. You need to have one person who's going to be in charge of all the business interests, Mr. Andre in this district, and you would want people going to him rather than making decisions. So there's a little bit of tension in the statute in terms of what central office responsibility is and principals. Principals understand that very often defer to the superintendent, because all, no matter what responsibilities they have, they're subject to the superintendent's oversight and control in the end. That's the way the statute is written. But principals are the kings and queens of their individual kingdoms now. That's the way this is set up. So they have substantial discretion. But with that discretion comes not only the responsibility, but the judgment if they don't perform well. So they're no longer in a position to say, you're not handing me the ingredients. Basically, we're handing them a check, they have to go out by the ingredients, make sure they create a delicious and tasty soup for you all. And if they don't, that becomes part of the evaluation. The other feature of the statute that I think is really important is, in the statute, the General Assembly created a certain management style that they expect their principals to abide by, it's called participatory management. And they specifically say in the statute that principals are required to listen to and pay attention to certified staff. So as part of their judgment, they're responsible to listen to all the other teaching professionals, and that should inform their decision-making. Not that certified employees have the right to veto something that a principal says, but they need to be informed by that, just like you need to be informed by your superintendent when you make a policy decision. I thought that it was fairly extraordinary that the General Assembly would put a management style in a statute. I've never seen anything like it. It's a little bit unique, and I believe it's unique to this state. So one of the things that I wanted to identify for you, in terms of your, your responsibility in a global sense, to think about it, is, so you have the statutory responsibility to adequately fund education. So what does that mean? You obviously don't have the power to tax, but you all have the power to advocate. So part of your responsibility is to identify district needs, and then to advocate before anybody that can give you money, and you need to consider that. In a lot of school districts, the superintendent and maybe the chair will show up to present a budget, but in highly functioning school districts, the whole school committee shows up and advocates for the budget, and that's something that you should be involved in, because your budget obviously is the primary force that allows you to accomplish your goals in the district. Without that, you really are abandoning a lot of your power and responsibility.
Can I go back two pages? Because this, I would imagine you see this a lot in the struggle between school committees and councils. The entire care, control, and management of the public school interest shall be vested with the local school committee.
Correct.
Do you see that tension a lot between, well, you know, the people that have the purse strings and the people that are vested by law with the responsibility?
Yes, and I have a nice graphic on that later.
Okay.
Well, now, oh, we're talking about it right now?
Oh, okay.
So if you think about it, the General Assembly was not ignorant to the fact that you don't have the power to tax. It created a situation in which you have two bodies in municipal government, one which decides the bulk of what's going to happen to the taxpayers' funds, education. Apply policy, apply educational laws, and make sure you have the best interests of students at heart at all time in every decision you make. Then it has a completely separate body to determine how much money they're going to allocate to you to get that job done. The view from the General Assembly is, there's a natural tension between those two bodies, and the purpose, my view anyway, of that tension is to try to create the most efficient and effective service as possible. So it forces both bodies, when they cooperate, to come up with a sufficient and adequate amount of money, and at the same time, it forces the superintendent and the school committee to be as efficient with those funds as possible. The problem, I think, very often is that our friends and our colleagues on the municipal side of government don't necessarily take the time or appreciate how complex and how demanding the school committee's position is. And they very often don't take the time or have an understanding of the rules and requirements that you have to fund. Out of district transportation, you have a federal statute, for instance, if someone is required to be homeless, someone has, if there's a child in your district, and the parents become homeless and they move to North Providence, and the child is enrolled here at the time they become homeless, but reside in a homeless state in North Providence, that child has the right to attend school here for stability. That's what the federal statute requires, and you have to share in the transportation of that. I had a case in North Providence once where there was a child they moved for, and they had to pay the raw portion of that transportation. Not to say whether the statute is good or bad, but you're responsible by law to pay that, and you don't know when that happens or how that happens. We have an obligation to provide all education with free and appropriate education, especially in the context of special education. So that means a group of experts that you've hired, school psychologists, guidance, social workers, occupational therapists, just to name a few of them, have to come together at a special meeting with the parent, identify the special needs of the child, and then provide services to a certain group. You have to make sure that that student had progressive somewhat in the year. That's our basic responsibility in special education. In some cases, that's extremely expensive. In some cases, a small district like yours doesn't have the capacity to hire a bunch of professionals to apply those services, so the child has to go out of district. So you can have parents, whether the child with special needs, move into your district the second week of school after your budget is passed. The services for that child could be anywhere from $150,000 to $300,000 or more a year. I'm not saying the child doesn't deserve the services, but from a budget point of view, that's an impact that can't be forecasted. It's a complete speculation, and it happens frequently. So one of the good things that you did when you hired Sarah is she has a wealth of experience in this area, and has brought a number of students back. And you want a good, efficient special ed director that has the capacity to do that, to minimize the cost, to make sure that those services are appropriate, but they're also economical in the district. But those are impacts that can't be measured. I think sometimes our friends on the municipal side don't realize that, or realize the extent to which you're obligated to serve those kinds of students. So your budget is bumpy. A lot of things can be forecasted, a lot of things can't be forecasted. So when the municipal side wants to make sure you're super efficient and effective, sometimes they don't take into consideration areas of surplus that are really necessary for you to be able to operate. And that creates this tension, because they'll say, why did you live within your budget? Well, we have three kids, they're moving to the district, it costs us an extra million dollars. We have four kids that were homeless, that became homeless somewhere out of the, out of our district, and we had to pay for transportation. And the list is really endless. Parents can select to have their kids go to private schools. You have the duty to transport them, depending on whether they're at private schools, state statute. If a parent chooses to have a kid go private or go to education, you have the responsibility to pay for certain education priorities. Not your choice, can't say no, General Assembly made up that rule, we have to fund it, no choice. So you'll find as you go through the budget process, and one of the questions you might want to ask is, in particular areas like transportation, how is this transportation broken down? How much of it is out of district transportation? How much of it is for special education transportation? And you can get an idea of those areas that are categorical or required to be funded. Significant, significant impacts. See, Deb, you asked me a question, and I can give the whole answer.
No, it's a great answer, thank you.
Especially today.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm happy to. I think I've overskilled a lot of this already. I just gave some examples in the presentation of mandatory areas, RIDE in terms of a regulation passed, it's called the BED, or the Basic Educational Program, and it defines the extent to which you have to provide general educational services. RIDE can come in and can require you to engage in certain programs and certain services for students. If you don't, they can take over your school district, and they could order the town council to levy a tax. Recently, a case in Providence, where they went to Providence, they took Providence over, and they decided that Providence's budget had to be much higher than had been passed by the city council. Subsequently, there was a lawsuit, lawsuit, because that statute also requires, not only can a commissioner come in and take the keys from you guys, but can also assess a certain amount of the budget that has to be paid by the municipality. That case was recently settled, I think it was ten or twelve million dollars, I don't remember that city in Providence.
That it was underfunded?
It wasn't a question of underfunded, it was a question of not paying your share of the budget.
Right.
Oh, got you, got you.
So... So the state came in and they made a certain level of budget, and there had to be a contribution on that.
Got you.
You don't ever want to get into that situation. Question on my?
No, I just wanted to turn that off.
Okay. There are numerous regulations that drive what you do. So RIDE passes this regulation called the Basic Educational Program, which guides the kind of services you have to give to kids. The Department of Health passes a regulation that says that if a child has a prescription for medical marijuana, the school district shall pass a policy to facilitate that. In some districts, when this was originally passed, that especially more conservative districts, this was kind of a hot pill to swallow, but it's a war, and you have to pass it, and you have to facilitate it. And we already talked about education of homelessness. Additionally, virtually any decision that the school committee makes can be appealed by an affected person to RIDE, and RIDE makes that decision over again. And that decision then becomes binding on you. Now, that could be further appealed to the Board of Education at Superior Court, then to the Rhode Island Supreme Court, and our office has three or four of those cases going now in different stages. That gets to be pretty expensive. So in a sense, you kind of pay one way or the other, you pay legal fees to fight a, what you think is a justified battle, to assert and maintain your rights. But if you lose, you end up paying what you had commanded to pay. RIDE's principal enforcement mechanisms are they can take a district over if they need to, or they could pull back your state funding. What percent of funding comes from the state? Forty, forty-five percent?
Oh. What? I think it's more like seven.
Seven percent, maybe?
It's low.
So that funding can be withheld, including any federal funding and federal grants, and that's typically their means of making sure that their decisions are compliant with the provisions. I've already gone over this piece, talking about principals. I just wanted to, concluding comments at this point on this one, about relationships. Probably the most important thing that you can do is work through consensus. I've been in so many school committee meetings where people become very passionate about an issue of school committee members, and it creates factions and fidgets among the school committee members, and they usually come to me, I'm the therapist, and they complain. And I always say the same thing, do you realize if you look at the votes that you've taken over the last year, 99% of the time you agree. You ultimately always pass a budget, you make decisions together in all different kinds of circumstances when they're appealed to you, or if you have a recommendation from the superintendent, you engage in all kinds of contracts, and you all agree, you should be able to find a basis of agreement under 1% in the end. You should strive to try to work together and have a public face that shows that the committee wants to move forward and work as a group. Even when you're disagreeing on a particular item and you've lost that battle, you still should consider whether or not you want to act to undermine the committee, the majority's decision, or work with them and improve that decision to bring, bring the decision more in line with your point of view. When school committee members call me and they ask me how they would deal with an issue, very frequently, and some of you I think have in the past, I always say, can you count? Questions, can't count? Yeah, can you count? Because if you can't count to the majority, you can't get anything done. So your job as an individual school committee member is more about advocating in your group and convincing your members and majority members to vote your way. And if you can't do that, you can sit and be a sniper, but you get nothing done. So it's very important to keep that in mind, even when the issue is passionate. And when you sit back on any issue that you're passionate on, you realize you probably expended a little too much energy on it when you're down the road with it, or if you're waiting in there. The people that you work with end up being much more important than the passion that you express for the issue. And I don't know of any other body in the municipal government where passion is more evident to the public. So just put a governor on yourself and think about, and self-reflect when you are involved or deeply in an issue and feel passionate about it. This has been 35 days, but it's been 40. School committees. I think we've talked about this already. Yep, that was my graphic.
Tension forces.
Municipal tension.
Did you draw that yourself?
I'm not sure we could get that. So we have to remember that the municipal government gets to set our budget by giving us the funding for that budget, and then you have to make, state law requires, after the municipal government says you have X amount of dollars, you have to conform your budget to that figure. And that requires you to make reasonable cuts in your budget to get to that figure. That is your statutory responsibility, that has to be done within 30 days after you get your final figure. Now, that may be some solace to the municipal side of government that says, yeah, we gave them $15,000. But ultimately, if you have fixed costs that exceed that, even though you're going to try to get to that, it's obviously not going to work. And that's when we get into that process, and that information that I gave you is what happens when your expenses are going to exceed your budget, and how do you go forward from that, and how do you stop that process? That's why I gave you that piece here, because you may be facing that this year. But also, I have to say that municipal funding reflects the value that they hold in education. So if they, if you have a mature relationship with your town council, and they trust you and you trust them, and they say, we, you, we need this amount of resource to accomplish this goal, if they don't agree with that, they're telling you that your educational values and me as our misalonge, and you're ultimately going to get the kind of education and the kind of school district that they want to fund. That's just the way it is. Sometimes that's good, sometimes that's bad. The last point I wanted to make is about our union colleagues, and I just want to give you the right orientation for this. Because in a lot of, a lot of districts and a lot of municipalities, the idea is, how can we put our foot on the neck of the union and force them to capitulate to us? That's not really what this system is about or how it's supposed to work. Because the union represents heroes, which are people that teach our kids, people that care for our kids, people that clean our schools and make a safe and healthy environment. So the point of view of unions' evil is a theory from like the 1960s, where unions have to be destroyed, in my point of view. But we have to understand that unions come from the point of advocacy for their members. It's not their responsibility to have an identity with you or to you or how you want the district to operate. Their interest in salary, benefits, working environment. The statute tells them that that's what they're supposed to advocate for. So don't necessarily expect them to have the same alignment that you have in terms of your values for education, because that's not why they're there. And I think if you understand that and you respect it, you can solve any problem with the union. Because ultimately, you only have so much money, so at some point, you say, no, you can't afford it, right? But don't expect, even though they're friendly with our colleagues on the other side, that that means they're going to agree with us. Don't expect when we have personnel that's really problematic, that the union is going to recognize that they're problematic and help us get rid of that individual. That's not their job. Their job is to represent that individual's interests before us. So don't be frustrated by that. I see that happening a lot. Two final thoughts, I think I've talked about one more. Don't let your decision-making process push you, because when you deflect on it, it's not that big of a deal. Things get resolved in education, and things move forward, sometimes because of you, sometimes despite your actions. But they still tend to move forward in a positive path, that's what I assume. And also, there's no right way to do the wrong thing. So don't look for a process that looks right, but the ultimate goal is corrupt, inappropriate or proper or violation of the law, because you're going to end up with a bad product in matter of what you do. So you have to seek to find out what the right thing is, and collectively, I know that you'll decide that in every instance. And then we can find out how to get there, even if it's difficult. A lot of times I tell clients, don't tell me how to get someplace, let's talk about what your goals are, and then let's discuss how we can get to that goal, as opposed to, let's focus on the process, because it really doesn't make any difference what the process is, if you want to get to the people you're close to. There's some questions about this?
Just a, some examples were shared earlier, like what do we do if a parent contacts us, and, you know, the examples they shared, but just more of a comment on like code of conduct, so like social media, right? I mean, there is an expectation as an elected official that our digital footprint is appropriate and that we're not engaging in a manner that would be ill-advised. So I just, just wanted to put some light on that, because we do see that. Not, not from us, I'm saying, but it's, it's out there, that there are comments, there's, we're getting tagged and things, not right now, but how do we navigate that? Because it does get pretty tricky.
That's an excellent point, and I was going to talk about it a little bit when we talked about, you have the other presentation? Yeah. It's not a good one. No, no. Oh, many issues, because you raise a really important point. First, I want to tell you there was a recent Supreme Court, there were two Supreme Court cases that deal with social media, and one, an official creates a public forum, and they, Supreme Court tells us that even if you have private use of social media, but you are an elected official, and you indicate that it's private, the extent to which you put public information on that that relates to your job, in this case, the school district, school business, policies, you could be creating a public forum that gives people a constitutional right of free speech to respond to you, and to have that information put on your forum to the extent you allow everybody else to do it. So if you don't like somebody's comments and you try to block them, they could ultimately sue you, sue for legal fees, and it could be a bad situation. So the first, with respect to social media, the first thing you have to think about is if you intend your social media to be private, keep it to your private life and private details, and try not to let it bleed over into issues. The second, I'm going to preempt one of the slides on this, is that the extent to which you engage in conversations with officials on social media is you could create a digital forum, and you could be subject to the Open Meetings Act. You could be, we're going to go a little more detail, you could be punished for that. And the third is your point of, we have to be cognizant that we've all been elected to a position, and it's a public-facing position. And you're representing now the school district with everything that you do, every appearance that you make, even if it's for your child, every social event that you go to, and that's a reflection not only on you but on your school committee. The manner in which you act at a school committee meeting is a reflection on you and your school committee in the district, and that's a reputation that you don't want to tarnish. Because in the end, public just loses confidence in what you do, literally can't get anything done, because you lose your ability to have it. And I know you don't want to be in that position, you want to be, you put tremendous energy into running for office, and I really admire everybody that knows, because it takes a lot of time and effort and knowledge to learn how to be a good school committee person. And to throw that away with inappropriate comments on social media is just, it's a terrible waste of the issue. It's just squandering an opportunity that you have to be good. You don't want to come out of this experience in a bad light. And I've seen that happen to numerous people, and I always feel the same way, bad and bred, that they love themselves and stuff. Is that addressed yet?
Hundred percent.
Too many words?
Nope.
Okay. Attorneys, we have a lot of words. So what is the OMA, the Open Meetings Act, what is the intent behind it? So the rule by the General Assembly, thank you very much. So the General Assembly's intent is the public's business, to the extent possible and practical, should always be held in public. And that transparency, that light that we shed on all our actions informs the public and ensures that things are not being done corruptly or inappropriately. So if you took this position and you're afraid of criticism, again, you're in the wrong position, because the public is supposed to criticize you, is part of your job, and they're supposed to inform you and give input, and be angry if they don't like the things that you're doing, and that's part of the job description here. This statute facilitates that, it facilitates democracy, and that's why it was passed by the General Assembly. So what does the OMA apply? It applies to these circumstances. When we have an open meeting, there are limited circumstances where we can close a meeting, which we'll even talk about, it requires that you provide an annual and supplemental notice of when meetings are going to be, and you've already done that, you voted on a calendar, and you may have special meetings that you'll post as well, and there are posting requirements, and it requires you to keep minutes of the meeting, which are significant, and we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes, too. But you are required to have some kind of written basis that people can go back and look at at some point in time for what you did and why you did it. And again, that gives transparency to the public, so they can go back 15 years in theory, and they can see, would you vote it on and why you did, and whether or not that was appropriate. The General Assembly, excuse me, the Order General says that basically, the Open Meetings Act is like a free, like in school. Things they look at when they determine whether or not this law applies to us, was there a forum, was there a, basically a public body, and was there a meeting? And all of those items have specific legal definitions to them, which the Attorney General has defined in literally hundreds of different cases. All kinds of cases come up. I'm sure you realize that when somebody files an open meeting complaint against a committee or an individual, and not merely your friends, there's usually some kind of intent behind it. And they realize that, too. So they try to fail you by the law, they try not to be, they try not to punish you, they just want to make sure that you generally, that if they're able to do something that you did, and tell you to do it again in public in an appropriate forum, sometimes they'll slap you on the wrist and say, don't do this again, sometimes they'll issue a fine. But fines are pretty few and far between, and generally, the Attorney General looks for some kind of intentional, malicious act that violates the statute, and you do it just because you're honest. So what is a forum? A forum generally is defined as a simple majority. So whenever, whenever three of you get together, we have a forum, it doesn't make a difference where that forum is, it doesn't make a difference how that forum is constituted. So if three of you get on your Facebook and you're exchanging comments, you've established a forum, even though you never intended to do that. If three of you get on the telephone to talk, same thing. Three of you send emails, which is like one of the worst sins, because there's a permanent record that you've done that, you potentially violated the Open Meetings Act. So you have to be really careful about how we establish a forum, it's pretty easy to do that sometimes.
And, and just because we've experienced, all of those things are subject to attorney search roles. If something comes in that they're trying to establish that you established a forum, that you had a meeting that you didn't notice, that our emails, our texts, those are all subject to discovery, I guess, is the...
You're right, the Attorney General has the right to order you to provide those. Usually, we do it voluntarily, and if we make a mistake, the Attorney General, here it is, we'll look at it, we know we made a mistake, and we've already taken corrective action, and they really appreciate that. People that they like to punish are the ones that try to hide it, or the ones that have done it maliciously and intentionally, to do something that's inappropriate. So it's not something necessarily to be afraid of, but there are some elements in it that can identify for you that areas. One of the things to understand is not only a forum cannot only constitute three people in some format getting together and discussing school business, but they have this concept of a rolling order, what's called a walking forum. So if the chair calls Elaine and talks about a topic, and then Elaine or the chair calls you, Jocelyn, and talks about the same topic, that's what's called a rolling forum. So we have to... So we have to be careful of that. There are even some recent decisions from the Attorney General that says if one person, a third party, who's not related to any of you, call all of you and talk to you about school business, it could be the same result, a rolling forum. Not all the time, but certainly can. So we have to be careful of that. So what's the remedy for that? Because sometimes that's difficult. Post a meeting and have a meeting. That's all we do. It's not that big a deal to post and have a meeting if we need to have it. We don't have to reorganize your schedules, but that's what we need to do to transact Email distribution, Les. Do not generally establish a forum. So the chair can send out an email to all of you, the superintendent can send an email to all of you, and would if he wants to provide you with some information, maybe about an emergency or some significant event that happened in the school. The fact that one person sends to all of you a communication doesn't establish a violation. What establishes the violation is when you transact business. In other words, you respond to the email. So you'll find if there is an email that goes out to all of you frequently, to send out an email and say, please do not respond to this email, because when you press the button, it's going to be to why you all not only violated the law, but you've commemorated the fact that you violated the law. And it's very easy, because emails are never born, especially in our district system. Even if you delete them from your computer, they're still there, they can be recovered. What is a meeting? A meeting, I have a simpler definition than that, is when you meet to talk about the transaction of school department business, you've established a meeting based on the topic. This is a little more technical, really difficult to handle. So let's go get a couple scenarios. You have a weekend dinner party, and three school committee members are at the dinner party. The fact that you're at a dinner party, does that mean that you violated the law?
No.
You've established a forum, right? And you're all members on the same committee, but if you don't talk about school committee business among the three of you, there's no violation of the law. People may suspect that you have, but there's no evidence of it, and you haven't, there's no problem. How about if two members in the town council and two members of the school committee have reestablished a forum, would be the body?
No.
So is that conversation okay? Say yes, in cases. These are the Attorney General's examples, mine or not mine, because I copied these from this.
He's up his game?
The superintendent meets with, maybe it's appropriate that I'm voting up there, huh?
Trouble, trouble.
Meets with three school committee members, is that...
I love the outfits.
...an open meetings violation?
Yes.
Yes.
Unless that meeting was posted. I was looking through your bylaws, and there was something in there that I didn't realize, is you could establish a forum with three members, but in order to have a vote to do anything, have at least three members. So when you establish a meeting and you're not all available, and all three of you show up, all three of you have to agree to vote, to do an issue vote.
Exactly. Can't be two of you. Can't be two out of the three.
Because typically, it's a majority of the people present.
Right, but it isn't.
Something like that.
That's just in our bylaws.
Correct.
We could change that.
Sure.
I'm not changing it.
Social media comments. You start a discussion on somebody's social media page. It's a friend's page, but three of you decide to chime in, because your views are very important, and you want to get them out there in the public. And you each talk, you have some kind of exchange. Is that potentially an open meetings violation?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So we have to be careful about how we navigate on social media. Can you have a, can you, can you come to a school committee meeting virtually?
No.
As of, during COVID, there was an order that was issued by the governor's office up until 2022. You were able to attend virtually. You're not now, except in a couple of very specific instances. You're in active service, or you apply, you have disability, and you apply to the Governor's Disability Council, Council on Disability, as it was called. And you submit them a plan, and they give you the opportunity to be able to attend virtually. And then they have all kind of technological issues that come along with that, because generally, they like the public to see your face somehow, so it would be on screen. And you also have the ability to see what the public, the public reaction to comments are, as well as school committee members' reactions. It's a little difficult to do. But I've done that three times for school committee members that were injured or hurt on some other way, and it's a process, but it could be done eventually. One of the last things I want to touch on during the executive session. So the OMA allows us to go into the executive session to be able to discuss issues, and they enumerate the specific reasons why. One of the, one of the items that's not enumerated is to get legal counsel. And there's this Superior Court case, where Superior Court Judge Judge Williams recognized that you have the right to get legal counsel in private, because my opinion could be used against you, right? And if you have to ask me my opinion, I have to respond in public, and it might be different questions than you would do alone, and there might be different answers, because none of us want to create liability for the school district. So besides the exceptions that are enumerated, we also have the opportunity for you to receive legal advice on any topic if you have legal questions. But it's kind of limited to that specific area. So for specific purposes, we can close a meeting, which means you get to have a discussion. That doesn't mean that you don't advertise what you're going to talk about. And the Attorney General has really specific rules when you go into executive session, the phraseology that he uses on the generals. And frequently, if there's an issue, Peter, the chair, will call me up and say, we want to do this in executive session, can we? So it's a yes and no. And second, how could we do it, and how do we appropriately advertise? With respect to the exemption, the Attorney General requires us to have a specific exemption. We have to use the actual statute and say, we're going to, we're going to talk about personnel matter dealing with a teacher or a teacher termination, for instance. Then you have to attach the statute to it, it has to be on the agenda. And there are a number of them, I'm just going to point out really quickly, if I can get to them. This is an important point before we get to it. People often think that if we're going to talk about them in executive session, we have the right to attend in executive session. You have the power to tell them to invite somebody or not invite somebody in executive session. But generally, if we are going to talk to somebody, the statute, talk about someone, the statute provides that we don't get the right to talk behind the back. They don't want that to happen. They can demand that that discussion be held in open session, which most people around the house have, because we're talking about dirty laundry. Who wants a dirty laundry discussed? If we, probably, on the committee talks about someone, if we want information from them or input from them, we have to give them a certain kind of notice to tell them to do that. And we may invite them strategically into executive session, so they're not put in effect in terms of requiring that discussion be held in public. And we don't have to disclose anything in public that we may not want to. So this is the, this is the exemption, so we would have to say on the agenda, discussion of general performance, character, or physical or mental health of an individual certified teacher. Pursuant to round, General was forty-two, forty-six, five, A1. And the Attorney General's office really wants much in terms of specific detail. If they don't, people file complaints. So their rules are pretty tight in this area. So we do that. You also have to advise the person, as I mentioned, that we're going to have that discussion with them and say, hey, I want to hear what you're talking about, so do it in public session, please. Infrequent that something like that will happen. Another very common exemption is when we have to discuss collective bargaining of radiation matters, that comes up frequently around negotiation matters. It could come up actually anytime that you want to discuss the topic of collective bargaining, when you have a problem with the, you know, collective bargaining, those, all those things. A lot of times, the school committee may engage in an investigation. And if we're engaged in an investigation, it would be a civil matter, not a criminal matter, we have the right to have that investigation of those proceedings in executive session. The one thing I want to talk about is the Attorney General's office has now identified certain areas. This is from the 2023, for agenda items that I just feel like it would be factified, items that they think are too vague. Their standard is, especially for the public portion of the agenda, are you providing the public with enough information so they know about the specific topic they want to talk about? And before Kim, the chair told you, we can't talk about inviting people into our schools, because that's agenda item. This is what she was referring to. If it's off agenda, we can't bring, the school committee members can't bring it up for themselves, and cannot go down it. So the process would be to talk to the chair and say, I'd like to discuss this at a future meeting, would you please put this on the agenda? Your bylaws give you the right to have an agenda item put on, but not the particular time that it's put on. So the chair may decide, it's the chair, we have a voted agenda for this meeting, or we do it next meeting. And any decision that the chair makes, that the majority doesn't like, the majority can ultimately rule that decision, okay? But if you look at the items that are kind of like tripwires or audit flights, things like old business, new business, way too vague, good and welfare, that used to be on all school committee agendas at one point, that's by and large gone. President's report, without having subcategories under it, about the specific topic she wants to talk about, or any other matter brought before the board. In fact, the public can bring up a topic that's not on the agenda, you just don't respond to it. But they can certainly come to the podium and talk, if you want them to. And on that topic, the public doesn't have the right, this is not a public forum for the purpose of public speaking out. You should want to be informed by the public. That helps you make policy decisions, and helps, helps you guide personnel decisions and everything else that you do. However, your meeting is a meeting of the district's business in public, not a public forum, is the difference. Now, most school committees for most meetings value public input, so they make provision for the public to speak. But you could set up the parameters for that public speech, and to a degree, you have. People are usually given three minutes to come up and to address you on the topic. But that's voluntary, not mandatory. The only time it's going to be mandatory is if you've given one member of the public to speak, you have to give the same and a fair amount of time for everybody to speak. So if you want to open up Pandora's box, that's up to you, and that's fine. But everybody gets a shout-out at that, which is only fair. A lot of times, something comes up, and let's have an emergency meeting, and I always say the same thing, an urgency is not an emergency. So if it's generally a plan, and let's have a meeting, and let's only post it for 24 hours, not a good thing to do. You could get in trouble for that, need that 48-hour posting period. But if it's a true emergency, like the boiler broke, and we have to get somebody right away to fix the boiler, that could be considered an emergency, especially this time of year, because it's a health and safety issue, or it's a facility preservation issue. I remember once in another school district, they were doing construction, and the facilities manager forgot to order the windows at school. So construction was almost completed, they realized they hadn't the windows. So they wanted to talk to the school committee about that, and the facilities director said, this is an emergency, we have to set up a meeting, we don't have to post for this. I said, nah, I think it was a mistake. I don't think it was an emergency. I don't think you get to do that, have to have 48-hour posting. So just because it's significant, we want to do it right away, it's got to be a bona fide emergency. Were you going to say something back?
I was just preparing to thank you.
Oh, okay. Where are we talking about? That's kind of it.
We do have an executive, I have a question.
Okay.
We have executive session this evening planned, and one of the items does not refer to the appropriate provision in Rhode Island general law. Are we allowed to make any kind of change, or allowed to take up the item?
No, but I'd have to look at it and see whether or not it could actually be shoehorned into something depending on the type of person.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay. Then we shouldn't talk about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, just one question. The scenarios you shared earlier, just one thing that I've been thinking about, if, let's say, town council has something school-related on their agenda that we all are very much interested in, and all five of us attend, is that a problem?
No, that's not a problem, as long as you don't discuss school committee business among yourselves.
Okay.
If you're going to go there, and you're going to be constituted as a body, and you're going to speak as a body, which joint sessions happen, you should both post.
Okay, thank you. That's what we do.
But if we go and we intend to advocate a position...
That's fine.
Individually, we may.
Yeah. But it never hurts to post, either.
No, it doesn't. And we've, it's been the practice of this body to do that quite, quite often.
So probably I've given you enough information for a minute?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was very good.
Thank you.
Could talk more, it was bypassed now.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item G on our agenda, I'm going to ask that we table that until after executive Announcements of future meetings. Our next scheduled meeting is January 14th of 2025. With that being said, I expect that we will be coordinating the joint town council, budget committee, school committee meeting sometime between January 1st and 15th. I don't have the date available at this time, but we'll certainly let you all know when that comes. At this point, I'd like us to move into executive session under, for item A, under Rhode Island general law 42465A4, legal advice for the superintendent search. Rhode Island general law 42465A4, legal advice on the FY25 budget. And I'm going to ask that we table the third item, Rhode Island general law 42465A3, as it's not properly posted. Do I have the motion?
I have 42465A4, according to this, is investigate proceedings regarding allegations of civil or criminal conduct.
Oh, you know what? You're right.
If that's correct, then none of these are posted properly.
You're correct. So we will...
Are your sites right, Ben, or are ours? Yours are? Okay. So we have, none of these are correct, then?
We cannot move into executive session this evening. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. I will make a, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.